Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
President.
Mr. Redd.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everyone who was involved in Sterling Fest. As many of you know, we had an incredibly successful Sterling Fest with record-breaking crowds, and the new setup was enjoyed by most. I don't think we heard many, if any, complaints whatsoever. Everyone seemed to really enjoy the new park amenities at Dodge Park. The vendors reported very strong sales, and the event sponsors were very pleased with the amazing exposure provided by the event. So, we're going to begin fine-tuning it some and already planning for next year, so I look forward to what is sure to be another great Sterling Fest next year. It's truly impossible to have such a great event like this without so many people involved, and I'd love to thank everyone, but surely I would be omitting someone, so I won't, but from the mayor and the council members to employees and volunteers, there's just a tremendous sense of collective pride in making Sterling Fest a can't-miss event that is held every year by the city, and everyone looks forward to it. So, I want to thank everyone who participated, who came, many for all three days, and no doubt it was a lot of fun, so thank you again. And moving on, the city is always trying to find ways to increase productivity through the use of technology. We frequently talk about that during the budget hearings and strategic planning, and this is especially important, knowing our workforce is very lean compared to similar-sized communities in the state and throughout the country. And I always throw out this challenge to residents and businesses or anyone interested. You simply will not be able to find a community in the country that has a fewer number of employees per capita than Sterling Heights while still providing excellent services and still having one of the safest communities in the country and a great place to live. So, our 650 total employees is indeed a very low number for a city our size, and that's our total employees when you look at full-time. It's much less than that. Many of you may recall that we had to eliminate 200 full-time positions through the Great Recession, and many of those unfortunately just aren't able to come back. So, we're always looking for these new technologies, new efficiencies to improve productivity. And this evening, our city comptroller, Nick Mackey, would like to take a few minutes to highlight a new program that will improve productivity and efficiencies in our payroll processing. While that may not sound exciting, Nick is going to make it very exciting.
Mr. Mackey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to be here this evening to present an opportunity to improve and streamline some of our timekeeping and payroll processes. As the city's comptroller, I have direct oversight for the city's payroll function. And to add a little context to what that payroll function is, I've compiled a few payroll-related facts for you this evening. According to our most recently adopted budget, approximately 68.6% of general fund expenditures are for personnel services. This includes wages, benefits, and legacy costs such as pension funding and retiree medical funding. The city has budgeted 479 full-time and 135 part-time positions for a total of 614 regular budgeted positions. This doesn't include seasonal DPW or Parks and Recreation staff, and it doesn't include election workers. Most of these employees belong to one of 13 bargaining groups, each with its own unique set of rules surrounding pay and benefits. Every two weeks, these employees generate 680 time cards, which equates to approximately a little under 18,000 time cards annually. Under our current system, all these time cards are physical pieces of paper that are manually filled out. For fiscal year 2018, we produced 16,830 notices of deposit or electronic paychecks. We also produced 878 physical paychecks. Further, we generated 903 W-2s for calendar year 2017. The payroll department has two full-time and one part-time staff members dedicated 100% to payroll. Further, the fire and police departments have another six employees between them that spend a significant amount of their time on timekeeping and scheduling functions. Various other city staff are delegated timekeeping duties each pay cycle in which they collect time cards, summarize time cards, and then submit said time cards to payroll for processing. Also, each department manager or director reviews and signs off on completed time cards before they're forwarded to payroll. Our current timekeeping process goes something like this. Employees fill out a time card, which is routed to his or her direct supervisor for approval. The time cards vary in format by department and bargaining unit, but basically contain the same information for all employees: hours worked, overtime, accrual usage, things of that nature. After approval, the timekeepers for each department summarize the time cards and forward them to payroll. Payroll must then physically review the time cards for contractual compliance, code them in preparation for data entry. The time cards are entered into our financial software, at which point the various balancing and error-checking procedures occur. After the data is reviewed and audited, a check or electronic deposit is created and employees are paid. After payment, payroll then spends the next few days breaking down the pay and scanning documents for retention. While the flurry of activity to produce accurate paychecks is largely behind the scenes, it's a significant task and an important function of city administration. The current system is effective, but it's time-consuming and a little inefficient. Some of the frustrations we experience with the current system are the manual processing and handling of paper forms, duplicate data entry at multiple points throughout the process, the lack of standardized data received by payroll, manually reviewing time cards for compliance with collective bargaining agreements, and complying with document retention standards. In an effort to improve this process, city staff, including myself, the police chief and the fire chief, reviewed potential solutions. After a thorough analysis, we have identified Cronos Workforce Ready and Telestaff as the best systems to improve our processes. With Cronos Workforce Ready and Telestaff, employees will be able to clock in or enter their time on an exception basis. This will generate an electronic time card that is routed to their supervisor for approval. After approval, it'll automatically upload into our financial system where the payroll department can focus on review and auditing of payroll instead of data entry. Further, the system has built-in intelligence to force compliance with our collective bargaining agreements and add another layer of control. With the implementation of these systems, the time savings are expected to be significant due primarily to the elimination of duplicate data entry, the addition of automated workflows, and the elimination of scanning for document retention purposes. This should leave employees with more time to focus on higher priority tasks. Further, these programs will replace old, outdated, non-supported systems currently being utilized for scheduling and overtime management. These old systems have been on their last legs for a number of years and are in danger of failure at any moment. To summarize, our current timekeeping and scheduling systems rely heavily on manual tasks, paper forms, and duplicative effort. Our public safety, scheduling, and overtime management systems depend on a variety of disparate systems, some of which are old and unsupported. Investment in Cronos Workforce Ready and Telestaff offers significant improvements to our processes by streamlining, digitizing, and automating the data workflow for payroll, reducing duplicative efforts in time entry and payroll processing, and will provide current and powerful scheduling and overtime management systems for public safety that will replace old, obsolete city software. If approved this evening, the timeline for implementation runs 90 days to value, meaning that 90 days from August 8th or sometime in mid-November, we should begin reaping the benefit of this investment. Thank you very much.
And again, just to highlight, this item is on the consent agenda this evening, so if anyone is interested, there's a full backup on our website. And moving on, as the political campaign season continues, it is important to discuss the city's sign ordinance, as we frequently get a lot of complaints during this time period up until the November election, and sometimes candidates may be confused with the ordinance. So, we thought this evening we would have our assistant city attorney, Don Denault, provide us with an overview of our ordinance. He's been instrumental in developing the amendment we had a couple of years ago, so he knows it inside and out. So, Don is with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and everybody watching at home or in the audience. I'm going to keep this brief because I think it's probably easier to just give a summary and then keep it a little less scripted and a little less polished, and then maybe some questions if anybody has any questions that have come up during this campaign season. But, as Mr. Vanderpool pointed out, this is a very good time to revisit. I know there's some new faces up here since the last time we worked on our ordinance. And just by way of brief, brief history, the reason we had to revise our ordinances was because in June of 2015, the United States Supreme Court finally weighed in on content-based regulations that govern signs in local communities. The town of Gilbert had had on its books for many, many years regulations that differentiated between what we might call in normal conversation the type of sign, but really it was based on the type of content of the sign. And in particular, what got them into trouble in that case was they had an ordinance that said that if you have directional signage, there are very specific rules that apply. And there was a church that wanted to have directional signs pointing out how to get to their church functions every weekend or every other weekend, and they eventually got cited for that, they eventually contested it, and it made its way all the way up the chain over just directional signage to the United States Supreme Court. And the United States Supreme Court said, "Look, under the First Amendment, and all nine justices agreed at least on this basic point, a community cannot differentiate between signs based on their content, based on what it is they're trying to tell us. It's not necessarily about the viewpoint, it's about the fact that the different messages are being treated differently." And the examples that they gave included things like, you can't say directional signs should be smaller, less pervasive, or have less time on the street than, say, political signs, because at the end of the day, your goals have to be limited to public safety and aesthetics. And how is it that differentiating between those kinds of signs and other kinds of signs based on their message is accomplishing that goal of aesthetics and public safety equally? It's not. So, at that point, communities all throughout the country had to scramble, and we worked closely with our city planning and city clerk and others to make sure we developed rules that were content-neutral, that were very forward-thinking, and still tried to preserve a lot of the character of the ordinances that we had had in place going into that time period. So, in 2016, we were able to get our new ordinance on the books. Under the new ordinance, we created different categories of signage. So, we have short-term temporary signs and long-term temporary signs and just temporary signs. And so, by talking about them in those kinds of words, instead of saying political signs are going to be treated one way, and directional signs are going to be treated a different way, and garage sale signs are going to be treated a third way, we lumped all of them now into the same categories, and they're either short-term or long-term based on how they're constructed, what they're made of, how durable they are, how long they last. Doing it that way allowed for us to still maintain things like our square footage controls, our number controls we took out, but by having a square footage control that by definition would end up limiting people to the similar or same number of signs they were allowed to have before. So, for example, in residential, one thing we didn't change, we said you can still have up to nine square feet of total temporary signage. It used to be, before the Supreme Court opinion, you could have up to nine square feet total of, let's say, political signage, but we can't call it political, we can't call it garage sale, we're just going to call it temporary signage. Similarly, we didn't take away our rules that you can't have off-premises signs on your residential property, can't have home occupation signs, can't have medical marijuana growing signs, they can't exceed the three-to-one length-to-width ratio that we had in place previously, and short-term signage is limited now in residential to three square feet, long-term signage is limited to six square feet. And the logic behind that was, a lot of times, the realtors have big, you know, post signs on your property when they're trying to help you sell it, and obviously, we didn't want to limit them to three square feet when they've been accustomed over the years to a different way of doing things. So, we thought those were some pretty creative, forward-thinking, and innovative ways to get everything under the same umbrella of temporary signage without differentiating between messages. Similarly, on commercial properties, we tried to retain the same rules we had in place prior to that opinion coming out. Again, they're temporary signs, whether they're political, real estate, any other type of message, opinion-related or otherwise. In commercial, though, because the Supreme Court said, "Commercial speech is not as strictly regulated, or can be more strictly regulated by municipalities than political speech, religious speech, those kinds of things." The First Amendment isn't quite as strict, so you can be a little more liberal with how far you go with your regulations. So, there, we say, "You can't have temporary signs that are related to your commercial use unless your monument sign is full, they have to be removed seven days after their purpose is fulfilled." We require registration of them, and that was something that was in place, again, before the Supreme Court opinion, where we want to know that if it's on commercial, that the commercial property has given permission for that, and we can kind of govern who's gotten permission first, so we can have a priority system in place for our code enforcement people to try to figure out how to handle complaints. We gave plenty of time for registrations to last so that people wouldn't be complaining that they couldn't put them up early enough or had to take them down too quick. And you can put in any number that you like, but again, the square footage we retained from the previous ordinance, which is, short-term signs cannot exceed 12 square feet, and long-term temporary signs cannot exceed 16 square feet with your total temporary signage not exceeding 40 square feet on commercial property, and they cannot exceed a six-to-one length-to-width At that point, we put in the new sign registration process. A lot of that is automated now online. I remember standing here before you, talking to you about how we were going to accomplish that through the city clerk's office and administration. Now, it is an online process that's designed to make it a little easier for people in commercial areas. And ultimately, just to summarize before questions, I wanted to put on the screen for anybody watching, just a couple of sort of summaries for all of you. If you look at the one on the left, you'll see that that's, those are some photos of what happens in communities that don't have sign regulations or sign ordinances on the books, or communities who weren't forward-thinking and didn't amend their ordinances, and so under threat of litigation, they can't really enforce the old rules that they had in place. And then the image on the right is just a summary for everybody, so in case anybody's taking notes about the rules in Sterling Heights, those are the residential rules, and those are the non-residential commercial rules. So, with that, that's sort of a summary of how we do things and how the ordinance governs, why we do it the way we do it, and I'm here for questions and concerns.
All right, then I'll open it up to the council members. If there's anyone that has any questions for Mr. Denault.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Through the chair to Mr. Denault. So, just to clarify for the residents, when you're saying long-term, short-term, explain exactly what that is. I know you didn't want to really go into detail, but you kind of need to, in my opinion. Sorry.
Sure. So, we actually define that in our ordinance, and I'll have to pull that up for you here in a second.
Sorry.
Yep, it's a big ordinance. It's 13 pages of printing because we have to be so specific about so many things. Let's see.
Yeah, please summarize that, though.
So, a short-term temporary sign, when we talk about the short-term signs, those are temporary signs constructed of less durable, non-rigid or semi-rigid materials like paper, cardboard, foam PVC, foam boards, untreated woods, and they're on a frame that isn't really designed for long-term outdoor sustainability, like wire frames, hollow or lightweight plastic frames, frames that consist of non-rigid or semi-rigid materials. Sounds a lot of technical, you know, a lot of technical mumbo jumbo, but really, the gist of it is, things on wires, things that are a little bit more flimsy, things that are made of paper, cardboard, things that the rain and the weather can erode, those are considered short-term temporary signs. By contrast, a long-term temporary sign would be a temporary sign that's constructed of durable, weather-resistant, wind-resistant materials such as vinyl, fabric, wind mesh, acrylic, treated wood, aluminum, composites, and they're on durable, weather-resistant, wind-resistant frames. So, I always use the analogy, I think I mentioned it briefly, if you think of your traditional political sign on a lawn, that's got little wires, and then it's got the political message. If you think of your realtor signs, they usually have posts of some kind, and they're more sturdy-looking. So, that's the analogy I would use.
So, the signs that have the metal posts that are pounded into the ground, they're not wire, but they usually are with the foam board, those are still short-term temporary?
They would be, because the foam board itself would be less durable.
Right. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Okay, council, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Through the chair to Mr. Denault. I'm more concerned when you say "short-term." Is there a time period? Is it 30 days? Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days? As opposed to the long-term, which might be a developer putting up a sign looking for tenants at a shopping center, which might be up for over a year? So, is there a time limit between short-term and long-term?
There is, and my encyclopedic memory does not have that memorized, but I believe we do a, we have a process whereby the temporary signage, well, there are two rules, to answer your question, actually. The first rule is that it's supposed to be removed seven days after its purpose has been accomplished or can no longer be fulfilled. So, whether it's political, whether it's a garage sale, whether it's a barbecue or a fundraising event, seven days after whatever it was, that's why it's not content-based, whatever it was, we're not picking on content, it's supposed to be removed. That being said, there is no, I don't believe in residential, there is a durational requirement, but for our registration requirement in commercial areas, we do limit the registration to, I believe, 90 days with one 90-day extension. Yes, so it's, a short-term temporary sign is, the registration, if you register it with the city to put it at a gas station property or a restaurant property or some commercial property, that's valid for 90 days, and you, as the registrant, can designate when you'd like that to begin. If you don't designate that, then it will begin upon proper receipt by the city clerk's office. Everyone is granted one additional renewal of 90 days for those short-term temporary signs, and long-terms can get an additional one year. So, bottom line, you can get that upfront, so if you know you're going to want it up for 180 days, you can register and say, "Yes, I'd like to use my one extension right away." So, then you get a six-month period of time essentially for your short-term sign, whether it's, again, political, garage sale, nobody's going to need it for that long, of course, but maybe a church has an event coming up, and they'd like it to be up longer than 90 days for some reason. They would be permitted to do that so long as they register it properly with the city.
Okay. So, let's say next year, we have a city election, and it's in November, okay? And I, you're going to put it up 180 days, we can do that someplace because we're going to do it for 90, and then have an extension, and just make sure it's down seven days after the event. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Oh, boy. Okay. And then my other question is through the chair to Mrs. Ryska, is I want to know how the online requests for signage went for this particular election.
Mrs. Ryska.
We received probably about 200, I would say, sign requests before this election that happened yesterday. They come in through email, and we have a 24-hour turnaround period where we let the candidate know, or let the applicant know that their registration was received, and then we, you know, we keep a list of them. What we've done, because we have had so many questions and phone calls regarding what property has authorized signs at what locations, we posted that list online in the interest of transparency. So, that gets updated as we receive applications, registration applications, so it is online.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Denault. My first question is a clarifying question. So, what is the total square footage that a residential property can have?
For temporary signs, nine square feet.
Okay, so I misunderstood you. I thought I heard you say three square feet, and so that was my issue. So, with regard to a sign no longer serving a purpose, so candidates that were in the primary and have, did not succeed, and so has that purpose been served seven days after that? So, those signs have to come down, but the other candidates that did succeed, those signs, as long as they had that temporary extension, they can continue because they're still serving a purpose, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, what's, is code enforcement going to be going out and saying, "Oh, I know this person didn't win their election," so, I mean, there's a lot of candidates out there.
Sure. I can't speak to how code enforcement will handle it. I imagine some of it will be complaint-based, some of it will be aesthetics-based, you know, if we see that it's just a cluster somewhere, they're cluttered or clustered together in some way. And I can also imagine that they do have some awareness, whether they're political or not, of the ones that are over and done. And certainly, we hope, and I think we talked about this a lot when we put this ordinance together, we hope that most of this will self-regulate. You know, most of the property owners don't want it up anymore, we hope. And of course, that'll just leave the stragglers, the stragglers, rather, that the code enforcement has to address.
Okay. And then the last question, there was a Facebook post of a candidate that had their sign in the right-of-way, and I can't verify that this was actually in Sterling Heights, but for some reason, it had a violation sticker slapped on it. Instead of, in past practice, we've just pulled it and taken it to DPW. So, is that some new, something new that the city is doing, or maybe it was a picture that wasn't actually from Sterling Heights? Because the sign continued to be, you know, in the right-of-way, there was just an orange violation sticker.
Right. We do have a sticker violation process that's in our ordinance for signs that are properly up, but for some reason shouldn't be there, maybe they exceed the square footage, maybe they're exceeding their time durational need. In the right-of-way, my belief is, we just pull those, just like we do for commercial, we're having a big sale this week on boats, you know, they can't be in the city's right-of-way, they should not be.
Yeah.
And so, we just take those out. So, I imagine that wasn't Sterling, but it is possible there was some gray area that maybe they stickered it first.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. That's all I have.
So, on that one, I think what was interesting about it is that I don't think it was in the right-of-way. I know the picture you're talking about, where I was described, or where I heard it was described, is that area in front of Ike's Restaurant, you know, where there's the drive?
Okay, yes.
In front of Ike's Restaurant? And then there's what looks like a boulevard? But, so it was the placement of that sign was actually in between the sidewalk and that road in front of Ike's. So, it wasn't in the right-of-way, so that might be why. And if they had, if, and Ike's is a commercial area, so if they had more than the require, or the, more than allowable square footage, it would be stickered?
Yep.
And then what, they have how much time to get it down?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours. Okay. So, that might have been it.
And I didn't get into that, but to point out the removal requirements, if we provide them with personal notice, it's four hours, but if we can't get a hold of somebody to tell them that they have to remove it, we give them 48 hours.
Okay.
Based on the sticker.
Fair enough. Mrs. Zarco, follow-up?
Yeah, well, just one more question, though, to Mrs. Ryska, no follow-up on that sign. But, I wanted to know, is, I know we always get a letter, once our signatures are certified for the election, we get a letter from you telling us what the sign ordinance is and what they, what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do.
Correct.
Do you do the same thing for other candidates, whether it be for, like this primary, where it was county, state, and federal candidates? Do you do the same letter to all of those candidates as well, so they know what they're allowed to do?
No, we do not, and that's because the city clerk's office does not certify those candidates. Those candidates are certified by the county, and it has not been past practice to give the sign ordinance to those candidates.
I think it would be beneficial to do that, because I think a lot of, some of the candidates mentioned to me, they didn't know what their ordinance, our ordinance was, so I think that might be something that we looked into probably for November, is to make sure, they don't want their signs picked up and thrown away because it does cost money, so I think if they're aware of what they can and can't do in Sterling Heights, you know, it would be, it would make a good relationship.
Yes, I will definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Shannon, sorry. All right. Mr. Shannon, sorry.
Very quickly. So, the policy, if someone has a campaign sign, or a sign, I guess, a temporary sign that is in violation, at, say, at BP across the street, or at a, you know, restaurant like Ike's or something, is the policy of the city to send the violation to the business owner, or should, or is the policy to inform the candidate, or, I mean, I guess, you know, beyond that? Are they the ones that get the violation, I suppose? Because, you know, the business owner might not have any idea that somebody came in and plopped down a...
Right. Right. So, that's a great question, and that's something that we did certainly try to address with the ordinance back in 2016. What we came up with was, look, it doesn't matter who put it there, or who authorized it to be put there, and it's impossible to track down a scofflaw who came in at three in the morning and plopped it there. So, rather than blame a candidate, or a committee, or a business owner, the idea was, if we can't get ahold of somebody to personally ask them to take it down, and give them four hours, then we will sticker the sign and come back in two days. And in forty-eight hours, we just take it. We don't cite anybody, we don't give anybody, get anybody in trouble for that, we just take it. And then, we hold them, and they can buy them back from us for, I don't know what it is, a dollar or five dollars.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Kosky.
Through the chair to Mr. Denault, what information is required if you want to register a sign on the website?
Absolutely. You have to, and it's all laid out on the actual site, it's the same form that we also have a hard copy of, I believe. You have to put the address, a description of the sign, or an image of it, you have to have the dimensions of the sign, the first and last name of the person registering the sign, doesn't matter if it's the candidate themselves, somebody who's registering that sign, if it's political, for example, whether it is a short-term or a long-term sign, based on its build, you know, what it's made of. And if the registrant is not the owner, or a person who has authority over that commercial site, they have to give their name, telephone number, or email address, telephone number or email, and that has to be for the individual who gave them permission to put it up. And then, we need a mailing address, telephone number, and email address for the actual registrant, so the city clerk can send the confirmation to them that the registration was accepted, or if there are any deficiencies in their registration, we can let them know.
Property address, legal description?
Not a legal description, no. That would be way too, I think, sophisticated and complicated, as long as we know the address of where it's being put up.
Okay. I don't remember what we decided, but when we were discussing this, we talked about birthday signs. You know how you can order, let's say, flamingos, guess who's turning forty today, and they get up in the morning, and here's forty flamingos on their front lawn. How is that considered? I would assume a temporary sign, but forty flamingos is going to be more than nine square feet.
Yes. So, thirty flamingos would be yard ornamentation, which would get us into a whole different world of property maintenance code regulations, because even though they attract attention, they're more designed to do so through imagery than they are through messaging. If it were a giant birthday, inflatable birthday cake that said, "Happy seventieth birthday," which my mom is going to be that shortly, and my dad's actually thinking about doing that for her, that would exceed our temporary signage rule. That is a fair observation, and I don't know that we have it addressed in here. It's just not something I don't think we contemplated at the time we were writing this.
So, really, those only stay up for, like, twenty-four hours?
Right. Typically, they're rented.
So, maybe something that we just look the other way for?
Right. If it's a forty-eight-hour rule anyway, then for them to have it for twenty-four hours, they're going to be fine, regardless of whether it's a violation of our square footage.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Denault, is there a regulation as far as how close on residential property, how close the sign can be to the sidewalk?
There is, and that is, I think we have a lot line. Where is that at? There is a five-foot height limitation, I don't know if I mentioned that. And then, I believe it's a one foot from the property, five feet from any side property line, and cannot be in a dedicated right-of-way. So, the answer to that would be, not in our ordinance for purposes of sidewalk. However, I believe it's either county regulation, state law, or both, that says it has to be at least one foot from that. So, I remember that from years ago. So, the sidewalk begins the right-of-way area, they want it one foot off of that sidewalk onto your own property, so that it doesn't encroach in any way onto the right-of-way.
Okay. And I'm not sure if Ms. Ryska can answer this or not. How many violations did we have in this past election?
That is not something that I can answer.
That's code enforcement. Mr. Vanderpoel, if you could get that number for us and send it, I would appreciate it.
I have to agree with Mrs. Zarco. I think, you know, a lot of the signs, the abundance of signs that I saw in this last election cycle were from state candidates. And I know that, yes, they do live in Sterling Heights, and they should know our rules, but if they appear on our ballot, I really believe that they should be given the same ordinance information as the rest of us. So, I'd like to see that as well passed on. I have nothing further.
Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a brief question. Through the chair to Mr. Denault, can you tell me another city in Macomb County that has a prior registration requirement for commercial signs?
Off the top of my head, I cannot. We worked on this project for the registration, boy, it's probably been eight to ten years now. So, looking back on that process, I cannot recall.
I'm wondering if there's one in the tri-county area, because I can't think of one.
Right.
So, I'm wondering why Sterling Heights has a stricter sign requirement, I guess, than almost every other city in the tri-county area. And I'm wondering if someone were to challenge it in court, if we'd lose, because I can't think of a time where this has actually been challenged by anyone in the state of Michigan.
Sure. To answer that indirectly, I prefer to think of our ordinance as innovative, and subject to, and certainly defensible, and the model for others to follow, but I don't know if others have followed it. I think everybody chooses their own path. I think, I do remember that the discussions in that time period were that we wanted control over prioritizing who gets what, and code enforcement had no means of deciding which ones to take down, or to enforce against, back then, or even now, today, without a registration process. It would just become a free-for-all, where people could put ten signs up, and code enforcement would go, I don't know which one to take, I don't know what to do.
Seems like a problem looking for a solution, right?
It is. It was, and we looked for one.
I just, I don't see the problem in other places. I don't see Troy having this problem, or even Shelby Township having this problem. I think it's a problem that doesn't exist, really. And I'm curious why we have this prior restraint on political speech. I think that if it was challenged in court, it would probably go down. I think it'd be a shame if we were challenged in court, and we would lose a lawsuit over it. So, I know I probably have no support, but I would like to amend our sign ordinance to remove this requirement. But I think that's a fight for another day. So, that's all I have.
Okay.
Well, I'd second that if it was a motion, but we're not going to do it right now. I've hated the registration requirement, it's been, the sign ordinance has been the bane of my existence on council, probably for the last nine years. It's been the one, that registration requirement, I just don't get it at all. It doesn't make any sense to me. We don't require residential property owners to register their signs, and there are a whole lot of ways that we could enforce the ordinance, and it seems like it's going just fine in every other city, too. So, we can leave that for another day, though. I'm satisfied with the presentation today. Thank you, Don, it's very thorough. And I agree that it's probably a good idea to, at least to the state candidates, to probably state and county-level candidates, to get them a copy of the ordinance. I don't know how you would coordinate it with federal, and presidential, and gubernatorial. I mean, maybe you could get it to their campaigns, but I don't know that it would actually get to the decision-makers, and their campaigns are probably so, you know, large and bureaucratic, it'd be hard to get that to the right person anyways. They'd figure it out, I'm sure they all do, eventually figure it out, but at least to state reps, state senators, county commissioners, I think they should get a copy of, and they're probably, do we have, Ms. Ryska, do you have a copy of their address? I mean, is it easy for you to get that information?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Get it from the county.
All right. Well, I don't have anything else, and I appreciate the presentation. Mr. Denault, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vanderpoel, anything else?
Nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, for that report. We do have a presentation tonight from our fire chief, Chris Martin, who's going to present the thirteenth recipient of a Sterling Heights Fire Department Survival Coin. Chief, Chris Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, and Mr. Vanderpoel. Before I get into today's presentation, it's been two years since we started this Survival Coin program, and I wanted to give you a refresher on what it meant, because I've seen some questions and comments directed directly towards city council that haven't been accurate. So, we started this two years ago, you know, back twenty years ago, we used to give T-shirts out, say, "My heart belongs to the Sterling Heights Fire Department." But, we started this as a way to bring the survivors of specifically cardiac arrest. And a cardiac arrest is a condition where you are actually clinically dead, and that is reversed, and you survive. So, it's emotional every time you'll see this evening, I've got a story to tell you this evening, but it was never intended for, you know, we respond to about eleven thousand patients a year giving care. We certainly save other lives, car accidents and other things, and it was never meant for survivors of car accidents, or overdoses, or electrocutions, if it wasn't specifically a cardiac arrest. So, the fire department devised this program, we're the ones that find the people that we give the Survivor Coin to, and tonight's another great story. So, July eighteenth of this year, just a few short weeks ago, 11:00 PM, one of our residents, Mr. Greg Grimes, actually, his wife called 911 because Mr. Grimes was experiencing chest tightness and pain down his left arm for a few hours. So, the engine from Fire Station 117 in Van Dyke, and the ambulance from Fire Station 5 responded to his aid. And as they were, started to treat him, his symptoms started to subside a little bit, and he was actually contemplating between, a conversation between him and his wife and family, not having the ambulance take him to the hospital. But, the vastly experienced crew that was there recognized that there was some things going on that weren't right. They couldn't pinpoint any specific issue, but to them, they, he just didn't look right, and they said, sir, you need to go by ambulance. So, they went through the protocols of treating him, they contacted Beaumont-Troy Hospital, he was loaded in the back of ambulance squad number five, for his trip to Beaumont-Troy from the area of about seventeen and mound. As they were approaching the hospital, again, his tightness in his chest had gone away, but then it started coming back. But, as the firefighter in the back was prepping him to bring him to the ER, taking off all of the things that we had on him, he became unresponsive, went into cardiac arrest. In the back of that ambulance was firefighter Matt Marduz, which you will meet again in a minute, but if you remember, he was here in April, because we just hired him. So, he's been with us for three and a half months. So, alone in the back of the ambulance, he recognized the cardiac arrest, and he defibrillated Mr. Grimes, and then started CPR. Of course, he's yelling at his partner, get to the door, let's get this patient moving. His partner, firefighter Alex Gross, came out of the ambulance, the two of them brought him out of the ambulance, still continued CPR, rolled him into the emergency room door, still providing treatment, and defibrillated him one more time, and that brought his heart back to a normal beating rhythm, before they turned over patient care to Beaumont-Troy. Now, Beaumont-Troy, as Mr. Grimes might tell you, did an excellent job over the next few minutes, hours, and days. Within an hour, he was in the cath lab. Three days later, he was released to his home, and came to the fire station about a week and a half ago. So, that baby that you hear in the background?
Mm-hmm.
That's Rebecca. That's his granddaughter. And the minute he came into the station, I can't help but think that if it wasn't for the system that you'd have allowed us to build, and the firefighters that we've hired, they never would have been able to do that, and Rebecca wouldn't be able to be seen by her grandfather growing up. So, just a great story, and I would like to bring up Mr. Grimes and firefighter Matt Marduz to have him present the Survivor Coin.
On behalf of the Sterling Heights Fire Department, I'd like to award you the thirteenth Survival Coin.
I appreciate it very much, Matt. You know, I don't remember what you did, but I really appreciate it. I, you know, I've been a resident of Sterling Heights longer than I was of Sterling Heights. I've been, lived here since 1964, graduated from Stevenson High School here in 1977, and been married to my wife here for over thirty-five years. Thank you, Lori, for calling 911. Appreciate that very much, and really, the five young guys, can I mention their names? Is that okay? The five young men who came into my home, they are very professional. Matt Marduz here, Alex Gross was mentioned, Nick White, Jeff Vergawen, and Mike Amorino. And they really saved my life. I'm really not a person that I really didn't expect this ever to happen to me. I'm an active person, I don't eat that bad, I really don't. You know, there's some stress in my life, but it's just stunning to me to this day that this happened to me, and I'm just really fortunate. They say that the widow maker artery was a hundred percent blocked. And if I wasn't, I think if it didn't happen right there by the hospital, and have Matt here right by my side, I wouldn't be here. You know, that, they say very few people survive that heart attack, and so, I appreciate it very much.
Absolutely.
Mayor, before we go take pictures, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. I'll open it up to council, if there's anyone that wants to make any comments. Mrs. Sarowski?
I'll just make a quick comment, and again, thank you, Chief, for your great department and team that you have, because it does start from the top down. And Matt, great job. You know, I know it's in the heat of battle, and I've dealt with a lot of emergency issues. It's sometimes, you don't know how it's going to go, but it went very well. And Mr. Grimes, congratulations. I'm glad to have you here, and with Rebecca and all of that. I have my own little granddaughter, and I know the feeling, so.
I don't know why I got a medal. I got my life.
Well, that one you'll never forget. Give it to your wife, she deserves some grace, too. So, thank you again. That's all I have to say, yeah.
Counsel, anyone else? I just would congratulate you, Chief, and Matt, and the entire fire department, all the men and women who keep our, you know, community safe day in and day out. Mr. Grimes, you know, congratulations to you. It's good to see you here. I'm sure you're happy to be here, and your family is, too. I recently had dinner with one of the other recipients of the Survivor Coin, and, you know, the work that our fire department does, and our police department, and the men and women who work at Beaumont, and the other hospitals that we transport to, are making, you know, obviously, a huge impact on our community. And so, the, you know, just as little a thing as getting to, you know, have, you know, have a pleasant conversation with somebody who may have otherwise been dead, if it wasn't for the work of our fire department, is really meaningful, and it puts things into perspective. So, we're happy, I know, on behalf of the entire city council, we'll do everything we can to support the fire department to continue having results like this, because that's what you're there for. So, thank you very much, Chief. Congratulations to everybody, and one more big round of applause.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. That, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is an ordinance adoption, and this is to adopt an ordinance granting Consumers Energy Company a renewal of a franchise to lay, maintain, and operate gas mains within the city of Sterling Heights for a period of thirty years. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolve to adopt the ordinance granting Consumers Energy Company a renewal of a franchise to lay, maintain, and operate gas mains within the city of Sterling Heights for a period of thirty years.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda?
How you doing? Mike Credle. On this patrol cars, what is this hundred percent fund, where's that money coming from? G. And?
K.
J?
K.
And the motorcycle, K. And the dogs, where's that money coming from?
Were you here, or what's going on? Oh, you don't answer us? No more?
Sir, during participation from the audience, we don't engage in a back-and-forth discussion, so you can make your comments, and then, after your comments are made, normally, we would respond to them, but with the consent agenda, there's no deliberation.
Oh.
But we can have, what I'll have, well, I, what, excuse me, what I'll have happen is, I'll have Mr. Vanderpoel respond to your questions.
That's all it is, just where the money's coming from.
As soon as you're, as soon as everybody's had a chance to participate.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Mr. Marshlones?
You know, my name's Harry Marshlones, resident of Sterling Heights. If my math serves me correctly, we're looking at about a million, two-hundred thousand, some odd, some change, as part of the consent agenda. And I have all the confidence in the world that you folks have looked this over before you vote. But, item L, it says to purchase a Kronos workforce-ready deal. Quite frankly, I don't even know what the hell it is, okay? As long as you do, I'm a happy camper. But, the thing that it says here is... But the thing that it says here is total first year expenditure of $114,405. When we put something down as a first year, it always makes me wonder what's happening the second, third and fourth year. It would be nice to see some kind of an estimate of what we're getting ourselves into. It's like if a guy says, here, look, you can, I'll sell you this building for $500,000 and I say, yeah, okay, except it costs a million dollars a year just to heat the damn place, you know? So that's the kind of thing that I would like to see in here. That's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marshlons. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, or actually, Mr. Vanderpoel, brief response if you would.
Mayor Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt.
How you doing Paul Manny? I'm talking about code F to purchase outdoor wiring sirens, poles. Do you know exactly where they will be located or where you guys will be installing those new, you know, lights, sirens, poles and what needs, what is old and what needs to be replaced? Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you Mayor. First, with respect to the investigative vehicles, those are being funded out of our capital fund, that is a fund we use to purchase all of our vehicles. These vehicles have been planned for purchase, they're replacing existing vehicles that have exhausted their useful life, far exhausted their useful life, so that's where those are being paid from. With respect to the canine dog or two dogs, that is being paid for through forfeiture funds. These are funds that the city obtains from the federal government through forfeiture related to drug arrests or forfeitures such as that. So it's non-taxpayer dollars, this is money from criminals, if you will, that we can then use for public safety-related purposes. The same is true for the purchase of the Harley-Davidson motorcycles. These are replacing existing Harley-Davidson motorcycles, we're actually reducing the fleet some though, however, in just purchasing two. However, it's a very popular patrol, if you will, it's highly visible in the community and it's very effective, so we would like to continue it. It's very good pricing from state purchasing. And lastly, with respect to the sirens, there are actually six locations. This will complete all of our sirens now throughout the city being upgraded to a digital format. There's no moving parts in the sirens any longer and they have a 360-degree reach, if you will, with voice activation. The current six, the locations are 6418 Mile Road, 37200 Shainer Road, 11135 16 and a half mile road, then there's maps, by the way, in our backup agenda materials, sir, I'd be happy to show you the maps, and 6000 Wall Street, 3651 Denson Drive and 34900 Robinson Court. So again, that will complete the upgrade of all of our sirens throughout the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item 9A, this is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Police Officers' Association, Michigan Association of Police, presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you Mayor. By way of background, last year, the city council approved a new collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Sterling Heights Police Officers' Association for the period from July 1, 2017 to July 30, 2021. Recently, the Sterling Heights Police Officers' Association requested a meeting with our human resources division to discuss two potential amendments to the existing CBA to be effectuated through memorandums of understanding, which are before the city council this evening. The first amendment will allow carry forward of excess sick and personal time banks for officers entering the early retirement option plan, better known as EROP. When an eligible officer enters the EROP, he or she is allowed to have 150 hours of accrued vacation time bought back at 100% count toward the final average compensation, known as FAC. As agreed upon in the current CBA, any accrued vacation time in excess of the 150 hours may be bought out or carried forward. Currently, only 50 combined hours of accrued sick and personal time is bought out at 50% for purposes of the FAC. All accrued sick and personal time in excess of the 50 combined hours must be bought out, there's no option to carry it forward. In order to provide a measure of flexibility for officers during the five-year EROP period, the Sterling Heights Police Officers' Association is proposing the option to carry forward the accrued sick and personal time in excess of the 50 hours, counting toward the FAC. If approved, this amendment will allow eligible officers the ability to elect to have sick and personal hours in excess of the combined 50 hours bought or carried forward. So in simple terms, officers will now have the option of buying back their sick or personal time when entering the EROP program or carrying it forward to use during their continued employment. There is no material financial impact to the city for this amendment, it's largely just a timing issue. The second amendment allows EROP participants hired after July 1, 1996, to be eligible to be bought out for accrued vacation time at the time of separation from employment with the city. The Police Officers' Association members hired prior to July 1, 1996 are awarded vacation time in advance of every July 1. Consequently, when EROP participants separate from employment with the city, they do not receive a payout for accrued vacation time because it has not been earned. This will make sense because otherwise EROP participants would be paid for vacation time that had not been earned. However, there will be POA members entering the EROP with a higher date after July 1, 1996. These EROP participants earn vacation time on their anniversary date instead of July 1. Consequently, the existing EROP rule harms these EROP participants since they may not have an opportunity to use the accrued vacation time that they have earned, but not use at the time of separation from employment with the city. The certain vacation time is simply lost. The Police Officer Association maintains this is not equitable for their membership since EROP participants earning vacation time on their anniversary date do not have an opportunity to use vacation time earned before losing it. Again, in simple terms, officers will now receive payment for vacation hours that they earned, but were administratively unable to use them when they separate from employment with the city. The city council did previously approve a substantially similar amendment to the deferred retirement option plan, better known as a DROP, which is no longer in place and was a predecessor to the EROP. Before you this evening is a simple memorandum of understanding that addresses both the proposed amendments being brought forward by the POA. And knowing there are no direct financial implications to the city, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council approve the MOUs before you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
If they work, let's say they've got overtime, right? Do they get paid overtime? I don't, it's, does this go for the retirement then too? If they, like, if they got sick days or do they get sick days or do they get like personal days and that? If they don't use them, do they get paid back for them if they don't use them or do they lose them? Okay, you guys ain't gonna talk now, right? I gotta go sit back down? Okay, I'll sit down, you guys talk to me what's going on.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding amending the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Police Officers' Association, Michigan and the Michigan Association of Police for a period of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2021 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign it on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Mrs. Sarowski?
Um, no, but I think for the gentlemen that had questions, we could address those for you after if you'd like, sir, just to make it quite clear, that way you can have a little bit more of a back and forth, okay? If that would be, but for now, yeah. I have no further questions.
All right. Mr. Vanderpoel, if you want to try to respond.
Sure.
Yes, so.
Again, to the individual commenting, these are benefits that the individuals have already earned. So there's an inequity that when they leave employment, they're simply not able to cash them out at all, or when they retire, they're simply not able to carry them forward. Now remember, when they retire under the EROP program, their pension starts, are officially retired, but we keep them on for five more years. So at that point in time, they've already earned this particular vacation time, they simply want to be able to use it in the first year of their EROP. They can use it when they then, in the second year. It's a little bit confusing, it's a bit convoluted, but let me do this. You know, I'd like to call on our city controller, who I think can provide a little better synopsis. He was very involved in the discussions with this and understands the nuances, so can you give a little better layperson explanation, Mr. Mankey?
Sure, I can sure try. So as part of the collective bargaining agreement with the police officers, they have a program, as Mr. Vanderpoel stated, that they effectively retire from the city and then they continue to work for a period of time. When they enter this EROP program, they're treated as if they had terminated employment with the city. So we buy out all of their accrued time that they have earned through the collective bargaining agreement. So in their first year of the program, you have 25, 30-year employees that don't have time to take off. So what they had negotiated and what we had agreed to was that they would be able to take anything that doesn't count towards their pension and carry it forward to use in their first year after they enter the program to provide for some flexibility for the employees. What this memorandum of understanding is doing is offering the same benefit to the sick and personal time, allows them to carry it forward. So if after they enter this program and they get sick, they have some time to use off instead of buying it out. So it's cost neutral to the city, provides a little flexibility for our officers. The second part of the memorandum is that we have police officers that earn their vacation time on July 1 and then we have police officers that earn their vacation time on their anniversary date. For police officers that earn their vacation time on their anniversary date, they don't receive that time to use until they have earned it and a year has passed. So when an employee is going to leave the city, they haven't had the opportunity to use that time yet. So if we were to make them forfeit that time, it's inequitable because they haven't had a chance to use it. So we're taking something that they earned, but they haven't had a chance to use. So what this memorandum does is it pays them for that time that's earned. So I hope that clarifies. I'd be happy to discuss it in more detail after.
Okay, anyone else, counsel?
Mayor Taylor, thank you. Just briefly, I just think this is the fair thing to do. This is vacation and sick time that the employees have earned and I think they deserve to get the full compensation that they earned. So I think this is the right thing to do and I have nothing further.
All right, counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item under consideration tonight is 9B, to consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Police Command Officers' Association for the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2022. Presentation again from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel.
Thank you Mayor, and thankfully, this is much more straightforward than the past item. As you noted, this is a new collective bargaining agreement for our Command Officers' Association and I'll just run through the highlights of the agreement and be happy to address any questions. First, it's very similar to the police officers' agreement that city council approved about a year ago and it's consistent with the other labor agreements that have been coming before you. It is a four-year agreement. In each of the four years, there will be a 2.5% wage increase. The medical and hospitalization coverage will be the Blue Cross Blue Shield High Deductible Plan, which as you know, we've been making that, that is now the base plan for the city. Of course, it has a prescription and drug benefit plan as well and annual health savings account, known as an HSA, which includes a contribution from the city for family coverage and two-person equating to $2,400 and $1,200 for a single person. Members are responsible for any premium amounts over the state-established hard cap during the term of the agreement. Also, the plan, the medical plan I just highlighted, will be the plan that they take into retirement during the term of the collective bargaining agreement. In the event a command officer on the eligibility list for promotion to lieutenant or captain declines that promotion, he or she shall be removed from the eligibility list, however, they are eligible to test for future eligibility lists. That wasn't the case in the current agreement or the expiring agreement. During the four-year term, the new CBA, of the CBA, the city will replace an officer's bulletproof vest due to duty-related damage or the expiration of the manufacturer's warranty. For sergeant and lieutenants promoted into the Command Officers' Association after July 1, 2012, the number of years required to reach the top step is being reduced from five years to two years. The new agreement will include the early retirement option plan, which is the same plan that police officers have, again, known as EROP. Under this plan, officers retire after 25 years of service and for a period of up to five years have their pension benefit paid into an account within the pension system while continuing to work for the city. Like the former Drop program that was its predecessor, the EROP saves the city on medical and hospitalization benefits due to a new officer since EROP participants keep working. So we don't have to pay the pension, pay the healthcare benefits and then pay this new salary for a new officer and their particular healthcare benefits as well for five years. So there are some substantial cost-saving features of the EROP that are different than the Drop program that is no longer in place. First, when EROP participants terminate employment with the city, they forfeit 15% of the EROP account balance to the police officer, police and fire pension system. In addition, officers participating in the EROP that are eligible for retiree healthcare upon retirement will be required to pay 5% of base pay into the city's retiree healthcare fund, which has helped lower our unfunded liability in that fund. Both of the provisions have reduced the pension and retiree healthcare legacy cost. The cost neutrality of the EROP has been verified by the city's actuary, which is an independent third party that analyzes the program and again, they've confirmed that it is cost neutral for the city. The city of Sterling Heights Police Officers' Association again had an EROP, has had an EROP benefit since July 2013. Also, I should mention, the annual longevity benefit is being increased by 10% at each of the longevity tiered levels. All other monetary benefits in the collective bargaining agreement remain unchanged and that really is it in terms of the highlights of the agreement. And I did want to take just a minute to thank our assistant city manager, Jeff Bahorsky, our HR benefits manager, Kate Baldwin, for their hard work reaching the agreement and acknowledge also the good work and good faith exhibited by the Sterling Heights Command Officers' Association throughout the entire process that enabled the agreement to be reached and presented to you for approval this evening. And with all that in mind, I respectfully request the mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Sure, come on up, sir.
Okay, the Blue Cross and all that, that's for their civilian life, when they're off duty. They still get Workman's Comp if somebody, if they get hurt accidentally.
Yes.
They still get Workman's Comp. You said yes, okay.
Thank you. I'm certain if they have any workplace, work-related incident, they're taken care of. Is anyone else in the audience? Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
We resolved to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Police Command Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2018 to June 30th, 2022, and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Zarco.
I too want to congratulate both sides, those that represented the command officers as well as our administration, because in looking at the dates of the contract, we are like right on time. So I want to thank everybody that participated, and it's good for them and it's good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt, anything?
Nothing from.
Counsel, any further discussion with no further? Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry, Mr. Radke.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. How many members are, how many members are in the Police Officers Command Association? I'm just curious.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, plus or minus 37, right in that area. I'll get you an exact number.
All I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item 9C. This is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing placement of a charter amendment to sections 13.03 and 13.04 of the city charter on the ballot for the November 6, 2018 general election. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Cavalli.
Yeah, Nicholas Cavalli, Sterling Heights. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, city administration, for allowing me time to talk. At the last city council meeting, the council moved to postpone the vote on the adoption of this resolution. Many of you asked for the residents to reach out to you and give you their input. I did that to a couple of you in private, now I'm doing so in public. It is my personal belief that this power should remain in the hands of the people. So, that being said, the only change made to our city's charter should be an update to the spending cap number. Instead of making this increase in ordinance adoption, which is put in the hands of the council, which, don't get me wrong, I think you guys are more than capable of handling that, I think this is a power that needs to remain with the citizens. I believe it was put in our city's charter in 1968 for a reason, and it needs to remain there. Anytime that we need to raise the spending cap, that should be a decision made by the citizens of this city through a referendum decided upon by the people in a voting booth, not by the six or seven people that they elect to represent them here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavalli. Anyone else on this item? Mrs. Hatton.
Florence Hatton, Sterling Heights. No, no, no.
Mrs. Hatton, could you bring the microphone down just a little bit?
Somebody will finally be able to hear something here. Hello?
That's much better.
No, no, to ordinance 68, is that correct? I suspect the council needs a so-called blank check to pay for all the new projects and amenities that they did not anticipate, the true cost that was added to the budget. Wellness program, which now will be adopted into the fire department, police department, they will have that. You chose to help out with Mound Road. And what other perks did you council members give yourself behind closed doors that the taxpayers don't know about? That wellness program is really going to hit us big time. You say, give it to the voters, but there are two different categories of voters. The property owner, who actually pays for the projects, and the renters and the homeowners who have several families living under the same address, who can vote but do not pay taxes. I am a taxpayer, and I say no to this ordinance. In my opinion, I know, does it matter? And I concur with the last speaker who talked. He indeed hit the nail on the head, and I thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hatton. Anyone else on this item? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and good evening to you and the city council. My name is Nathan Inks. I'm a Sterling Heights resident. I usually don't attend the meetings. I usually watch from home, but given the desire expressed at the last meeting for public, come on this, I figured I'd come out and publicly express my support for the amendment as written. As Mr. Vanderpoel indicated last time, the spending power of $5,000 has changed significantly from 1968 until now, and I believe that having an ordinance would be the best way to ensure that the city government has flexibility while still maintaining financial and fiscal responsibility on behalf of the city. A couple of things that I think, a couple of things that I think are important to note. First, it's been kind of discussed, this blank check idea. I think it's important to remember that there's still a budget process and that all spending will still have to adhere to that budget. At least my interpretation of the proposal won't impact that in any way. Second thing is that the citizens and residents will still have a voice in what that threshold will be. First, when the ordinance is proposed, and then anytime that that ordinance is subsequently amended, there will be availability for input from the residents. That being said, I do have some concerns that the proposal may face some backlash from the citizens because of the concerns that were raised tonight. I know that the city of Rochester has a similar amendment that will be voted on in November, and at the last meeting, Mr. Vanderpoel discussed best practices. Perhaps it would be helpful to the voters if Mr. Vanderpoel has the statistics available to discuss the prevalence of language similar to this amendment among other municipalities across the state. What the percentage of municipalities that have an ordinance that they utilize as a spending threshold compared to the percentage of municipalities that have a hard cap in their charter or other governing document, and then the percentage of municipalities that have some type of cap that's adjusted to inflation. With that, I'd like to thank you for your time, and I hope to have the opportunity to vote in favor of this in November.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Inks. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. My question is the same question that I had at the last meeting. How are you guys going to get this, the word out to 135,000 residents about this ballot initiative ordinance? Because we know less than 5% of the community votes, less than a half a percent, over half a percent care about this ordinance. So I was wondering, how are you guys going to get this message out to the people that it's a concern to them? Because I don't know, you guys got advertising dollars behind us or not, but we have to educate our vote electric on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else on this item? If not, counsel, we need, well, actually, counsel, we already have a motion pending that's on the floor. This was postponed. So the motion was made by Mrs. Zarco, and it was supported by Mrs. Schmidt. So just based on past practice, I'll give the floor to Mrs. Zarco since it is your motion. Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. In the last three weeks, I've heard from three residents. The first one, I wanted us to adjust the amount in the charter, the ballot proposal, to reflect inflation, which would take us between $35,000 and $36,000, which is not something I would even consider. The second one wants no changes at all to the charter as it's written. And the third one, who is a resident of the city but actually works in finance for another municipality, told me that in their city, they have this amount in an ordinance, because then administration and council can come to an amount, and if it needs to be raised, it can be, but it also, in hard times, can be lowered without going to a vote of the people. So that's why, in looking at some of the other municipalities through Michigan Municipale, this is becoming more common, that you take this particular amount or dollar amount out of the charter, and when you do, when you're putting your ordinance together, and Mr. Inks is right, because residents will have a chance both at the introduction and adoption of this ordinance to voice their opinion as to how much money they think should be in this ordinance. So I have to say that, you know, I've thought about this a lot. And, you know, I guess my, the basic, or the bottom line would be, is if we can't put this on the ballot the way it's been written by professionals, and when I say that is, I've always gone with, if you hire people smarter than you are, you've proved how smart you are, and that's who we surround ourselves with. And when they give us advice on how things should be done, I don't think it's to get out of our lane and start our own path. So I think we've, good direction here as to how this should be done, and if we can't agree on putting it on the ballot the way it is now, I think that we should just let it go and keep things the way they are, because we've been able to function this way, but I don't think it would be in the best interest of the residents to go and put a dollar amount in this charter change. So I think I've covered everything that I wanted to. Like I said, even if we put it on the ballot now, it can't be, we're not like looking into a crystal ball, and we can't say we're going to win or lose this, but it isn't for any, you know, to say, oh, if we don't have a dollar amount in it, people aren't going to vote for it. Well, that might not be so if we go and educate them and tell them why we're doing what we're doing. It's quite possible that it will pass. So that's the other thing, but on the other hand, if it fails, we just have business as usual. So it's a chance that we're taking. Certainly, we want it to succeed, but I think we've been given the best advice, and I think the author of this particular ballot proposal has done it correctly. So like I said, if we can't do this without a dollar amount, you know, I don't want a dollar amount in the charter any longer, and then I say, just let it go, and let's just do business as we've, you know, been doing business. I think that's all. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I have to say that my support of this motion continues as it stands. I believe that we were elected by the residents of this community and to make some decisions. It's true that the residents will have input twice. If there is an ordinance introduction and adoption for a dollar amount, the $5,000 is clearly obsolete at this point, but I am not comfortable putting a dollar amount in the charter. I think we need that flexibility based on economics and situations. Who's to say that, you know, something happens within the administration that the council decides, you know what, maybe we need to rein that back in. We would have to go to, we would have to wait potentially two years to do that. And the argument of, you know, this is a loss of transparency, I don't see it that way. We still go through the budget process, and council still approves the bills every other week in our council packets, so I don't see it as a loss of transparency at all. So I continue to support the motion that is on the floor, and I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. I'll open it up to anyone else on council who'd like to speak on this item. Would you like to be next? Anybody? Nobody wants to?
Mayor Taylor, I'll speak.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
There will be more, I am sure. So I had voiced my opinion personally at the last meeting, that I think that there should be a dollar amount if we're raising it. It's been 50 years from $5,000 to what? That I would have liked to see as an option for us that we don't have, so with that in mind, I think that, yes, we are elected to make decisions, but those decisions are not, they're, as part of our decision-making process needs to be understanding that we are, we have a fiduciary responsibility, a financial responsibility to the residents, and I am not comfortable with just having it open-ended. I will still continue to say I will not vote for this. I am not in favor of it, so that's, we owe that to the people, in my opinion. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Anyone else like to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I just want to second Mayor Protem Sarowski's comments. I think that our founding fathers were intelligent, and when they wrote our charter, they put a number in there. Now, time has changed, and money is worth a little bit less than it was back then. I think if we had an option here to raise it to 15 or even $20,000, I could be comfortable with that. Over $20,000, that's when you start purchasing cars and vehicles and different things. I think that that really has to be reviewed by council as part of our job. We look at our packet every week, and I think it's essential. So to set it by ordinance, I think that that's inappropriate. I think that's not what our founders had in mind, and as the resolution stands, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mrs. Kosky?
I feel that we should have an amount in our charter so that the residents know what that dollar amount is. Looking at the consent agenda tonight, I only count three items that were less than, let's say, $20,000. That would be my number that I would put in the charter. There were only three items there that would be deleted, and two of those items were purchased with forfeiture funds. So I feel that we need to tell the residents, anything under $20,000, administration has the right to purchase. Anything over that, they need to bring it to the table, because a lot of people really don't take the time to go to the library or go on the website to check exactly what is being paid through the bill listing. This is where they get their information, here at this table. So I feel that we have a fiduciary duty to the residents to say, look, this is how we're spending your money. If you listen to the questions that were brought forth in regard to the consent agenda tonight, what were they? How much are you spending? Where's the money coming from? This is what we need to let the residents know, and I feel that $20,000 should be the limit. So I am not in favor of this, the way it's written.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Mr. Shannon, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. All right. For me, I'd like to just kind of summarize the comments I made at the last council meeting. I think we could have a really good, robust debate up here about what a hard cap number should be in terms of the city manager or administration's spending limits without having it come to council. This is a very, very common thing in operating agreements and in business agreements. Pretty much all businesses have something like this. If they're managed by a manager or a CEO, there's a certain amount that the CEO can spend without having to get the okay from the board of directors. Depending on the size of the corporation, it's going to make a difference. Obviously, the board of directors for General Motors doesn't have to authorize every single small little purchase, but the, you know, but the members of a LLC that is a startup might have a much smaller limit, obviously. So I think we are all in agreement that $5,000 doesn't make any sense. Even Mr. Radke mentioned that he agrees with the founding fathers in that they put a hard limit in the charter, but if you're in agreement with the founding fathers, well, that number is about $36,000 and $20,000. So maybe you were saying they were right about one thing but wrong about the other. Correct. So to me, like I said, we can have a really good, robust debate here about what that number should be, and that's precisely what we would do if the, if the council so chose to instead come forward with a charter revision that included a hard number rather than having it be set by ordinance. And so what we would be doing then is having that discussion, having that debate, having people weigh in, members of the audience presumably would weigh in. If the administration just picked, for example, $25,000, then that would probably, you know, get some people to come out and say, 25 is too high, 25 is too low. The council would debate it back and forth, and then we'd make a decision. And we put it on the ballot, and we'd vote on it in November, and it would be voted up or it would be voted down. But then, that would- But then, that would be the number. And if practice dictated that, that number was wrong, we'd really be stuck with it. So we would, in essence, be taking a situation that we all admit is a problem, this hard number, and replacing it with another, with a solution that's just as problematic. That maybe whatever number that this council decided would be good, maybe it would be bad. Maybe it would last for five or 10 years, maybe it would last for longer, maybe it would last for two years. We don't know. As I said last time, what we would essentially be doing is substituting our judgment, the seven of us, for the judgment of the councils that you all elect for the next several decades. And I don't see that as a reasonable solution. Charters and constitutions are not to be written in such a way where you anticipate that they will need to be revised in the future. You know, we didn't, we didn't draft, we shouldn't be drafting a charter in such a way that you know it's gonna have to change sometime. You shouldn't do that, because a charter should be a permanent document. You know, you don't draft the constitution knowing that, you know, in a couple hundred years, we're really gonna need to change some things in here. You give the ability to do that, because we're not, we're not able to predict the future, but you should not be drafting it in such a way where you absolutely are certain that this has a expiration date on it. That's not the way charters and constitutions should be written. And that's what we would be doing, if we put a hard number on it. So it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to say, let's us, the seven of us, debate what the spending threshold should be. It's basically a tacit admission that, yes, the council should make that decision, but let's make sure that we're the only ones that make that decision. And if anybody wants to challenge our decision, well, they better go to the people and get them to vote. It just doesn't make sense. There are so many safeguards in place with the budget process, with the ability to hire and fire the city manager, with the financial people that work for the city of Sterling Heights, with the administrative rule that would be in place, that is in place, that would continue to be in place by ordinance, which is that if, for example, the city administration wanted to, let's say the number was set by ordinance and it was 20. If the city administration wanted to purchase anything over 10, for example, they'd have to get X number of bids. They wouldn't necessarily have to come to the city council for the approval, but they would have to go through a bidding process. And there would have to be controls set up so that the administration would have a bid review committee or something like that, so they're not just have one person with the city credit card going and buying these things. All those things can happen. As Mrs. Kosky said, well, there were three items. Mr. Vanderpoel indicated at the last meeting, there's about 10 hours of administrative time that goes into preparing the agenda packets for consumption by the city council. So by that, by that estimation, about 30 man-hours went into providing this information to us to be voted on with, you know, surprisingly, there was, there was one comment during communications from citizens, but, but rarely does that ever even happen. So it does seem like a lot of wasted time and energy. And so maybe you're right, Mrs. Kosky, that a whole lot of people aren't going and looking at the backup. I mean, we, we had several questions that were asked, that pretty much every question that was asked on the consent agenda could have been answered by reading the backup material. Now, I understand people don't go read the backup material, but if we made it more accessible, maybe they would. So we could come up with ideas to make the information more transparent. Maybe put a dashboard on the city's website that shows, these are the spending items that have happened in the last two weeks that are below $20,000, that didn't come for city council approval. And it's just loaded right up on there on a page, you can go search it. So there are a lot of ways that we can improve the efficiency of what we're doing here without substituting this council's judgment for further council's judgment, and without replacing one problem with another problem. A hard number in the charter is always going to be a problem. It's always going to be something that is, is just a few short years or months away from being irrelevant. So I think a best practice would be to amend it, to have it set by ordinance. There are so many safeguards. The, the idea that this would be just a blank check runs counter to any of the, any, anything that I've seen here in the city in, in the last nine years that I've been on council, and certainly it would not be treated as a blank check. So I would vote yes. I will end my comments there. And Mrs. Riska, could you please?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes, Mrs. Zarco.
Do you want me to read the motion as it's on the floor before we vote?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Resolve to adopt the resolution authorizing placement of a charter amendment to sections 13.03 and 13.04 of the city charter on the ballot for the November 6, 2018 general election.
Okay. That's the motion on the floor. It's been supported. We've had discussion. Mrs. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mrs. Sarowski?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
No.
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes. Okay. Motion fails four to three. Four in favor, three opposed, and we needed a supermajority of three fits vote. I'm sorry?
We needed five.
We need, we need three fit vote on that. So, so motion fails. All right. Next item on our agenda tonight is a consideration item, and this is to consider nominations to City of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, I believe we have one opening. This is a nomination to the Board of Ordinance Appeals Two. It's an open seat with a city council appointment. Does anyone have a nominee? If not, I would entertain a motion to postpone to the, what is it, August 21st, Council meeting?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. We will move on to communications from citizens, where members of the audience can speak on any item not on tonight's agenda. Anybody like to participate on your communications from citizens?
Okay. Police Department. 15 Mile Road. It's just been redone, resurfaced, right? It's a drag strip. I'm telling you, they're flying. You can hear them list race rockets from Mount all the way. Years ago, I don't know what's going on, but we used to have a traffic cop there, radar. And it was funny, because every 15 minutes, man, he was racking them up. Bring them back. I swear to God, bring them back. Because already we had, I had an accident right in front of my house. We lost two deer, had a motorcycle crash, and an old lady got run over because the garbage can dropped out in front of her. And the cell phones, they're all on the phones. You know, everybody knows that. And the reason I'm really here, I want my wood chipper back. You farm it out now. It used to be $20, it used to be $40, now it's $100 for half an hour, and you farm it out. Years ago, we used to call them seven, 10 days, they'd be there, and they'd drop it up. Chop, chop, go, go. Put it out in the front to the curb. This used to be a tree city. But you guys changed the name now. I don't know, Shine Oler or something, it's a big S, you know? But we gotta bring that back. And the other one problem, I heard you, it's been about a year or two, residents got an address. Businesses got names. What's going on with Ryan and Dobree and that big building? It just got an address. There's no name. Is there a resident? People are living in that building, or what? What is that? And, and the fire department, I get a kick out of them. These two guys must be punished for being here. I'd like to see them on the road, I swear to God, sitting here doing nothing. Come on, you know? Nobody's gonna bump you guys off. You don't need these two guys. Look at them, relaxing, having a good time. They're punished, they got punished, probably did something wrong. But yeah, that's it. And the fire department, I don't know, why we call them ambulance? Who pays for that ambulance? If I'm a resident and I call the ambulance, is that free? Do I get paid free? Because if they put my house out on fire, is that free? Who pays for that? That's what I want to know, too. Because I see you boot it out, Universal. I haven't seen Universal go down the street with the lights on in a long time. So, and then plus two, the fire department, it gets a kick out of me, because it reminds me of Chicago Fire. You see the fire truck? You see the ambulance? You see the ambulance? You see the fire truck? So it must be a lot of mileage on that, and you only bought four of them. They're gonna wear out quick, I'm telling you. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. I, sorry I didn't get dressed up for the meeting. I wasn't planning coming down here, but I saw city attorney DeNo attempt to explain the sign ordinance, and I couldn't help but come in. Here's, here's a city attorney, lawyer that gets paid. He says, so we got an ordinance 13 pages long about putting up campaign signs. He couldn't understand, explain it himself. When the council asked him questions, he couldn't answer half the questions. So how's a candidate for senator or governor or statewide candidate that has 27 communities just in Macomb County and hundreds of them in, in Michigan, gonna know that Sterling Heights is out of line with all the rest of the world? Seems like when the city wants to spend money or change things around, the rationalization is always, well, we've looked at all these other cities, and Sterling Heights isn't like everybody else, so we have to change rules and regulations and raise taxes to make Sterling Heights like everybody else. But when you come up with these political signs, Sterling Heights is, is the only one that has these restrictive regulations, and we like that. And I can remember this being discussed twice, and I'm astounded that Mr. Taylor didn't get his way on it, because he almost always gets his way on things, that, you know, the late, great Mayor Noddy put this in, the 12 square feet on non-residential, and then he made all his signs 12 square feet exactly. And then he got all the landlords and property owners in his pocket, so he had all the permission slips, and nobody could put up a campaign sign, and it was perfectly legal. And I think Mayor Taylor was, or future Mayor Taylor at that time, was one of the prime opponents of that. And it was pointed out that in a general election, there's a lot more than three candidates and issues, and the, the three candidate limit stifles people's political input. It's been called out and out unconstitutional. It's been discussed several times. I, I was confused. I tried to look, in the old days, I could go on the website and look at the ordinances and the charter. The new website always just got us happy face propaganda, and there's no legitimate content anyplace. I'm saying, over and above the website, we need a hard copy set of current charter and ordinances that people can look at, that's not digital, that can't be changed overnight. I guess it's, I mean, it's common sense that you can put a sign on your own property, whatever you want, and if a business owner gives you permission, you can put that up. Now, if some of these candidates, sure, they just drive around and put up signs without permission, as evidence on Van Dyke. We see business properties with three competing candidates with signs on the same property. It's obvious they didn't have permission, and they were trespassing, and that was illegal. But this business of the permission slips is, well, that's out and out oppressive, because most of the businesses in Sterling Heights are run by recent immigrants that have come from countries with oppressive governments. And they might give you permission to put up a sign, but when you come up with paperwork for them to sign and put their name and address on it, they think, well, I might get in trouble with the government, because, you know, that's the way they did it in Italy or China or Iraq. And these people aren't all that wrong. I think the way they do things in Sterling Heights isn't all that different. Take a look at every union hall. When Obama was up for election, they had billboards, 12 by 4, 48 square feet plus a multitude of other signs. And despite all the complaints, the city never lifted a finger for six weeks to regulate the Obama signs on union halls. But other people, one inch over the limit, and the sign comes down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Smith? Yes, you, sir. Come on up.
I'm gonna have to agree with the first gentleman that spoke first regarding about the building on Dobree and Ryan Road. What is that building? I first saw the proposal being made, big tower, whatever it really was. I want to know where it, what it is, because I live in that area. Second thing is 19 mile between Ryan and Dequinder. Why is there only one or two lights there? It's basically the most expensive part of Sterling Heights that people pay taxes. It should be kept more safe, more bright. Also, 15 mile on Ryan, it's a disaster. How much traffic? How much? People basically do not know how to drive. I was in that area a couple weeks ago. I literally was on 15 and Ryan. Someone left the big plaza where there's a market and whatever there is over there. Basically, there's an individual who basically did not know how to drive. She was just swerving. Basically, she was like her first time driving. And there's, and it's basically like a drag race over there. So I basically want to say that there should be patrol cars all on Ryan Road every single mile, just basically handling traffic, ticketing all those individuals who are drag racing and their chargers or whatever it is, just to keep our roads safe, just to keep our people who are driving in their surroundings safe. Because we should not have people, you know, getting car accidents for something that another person was careless. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Joe Bedone. To make, basically to reiterate what he's saying, I actually live right there at that intersection, Ryan and 15. Hatherley Village, that neighborhood, I mean, it's, you got kids, you got dog, people walk, we have, we're dog owners, we have our dogs and stuff. You got, you know, everyone in that neighborhood, cyclists, and you got people riding through that neighborhood down Hatherley easily 60, you know, 40 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, you know, through a residential neighborhood, and it, you know, it, it is unsafe. So in, also in that neighborhood, there's no yield signs or speed limit signs or anything in that neighborhood, and, and other neighborhoods within Sterling Heights as well. So, I mean, people should know how to drive in a residential neighborhood, but, I mean, you see people just coming right, you know, they'll, they'll come to a fork and they'll just turn right, and they won't even stop. And, you know, traffic seems to be a, a big issue in that area, as a few of the other residents have commented on. So I don't know what the police force can do, but I would be happy to see it enforced. So, that's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Hatton, would you like to go next?
Yep. This is a mess. There's no doubt about it. The road commission has caused a lot of chaos at Hall Road in Shainer. As you know, I've hit every one of you people on the console. As you know, a right turn can only be made to an unethical turn through a parking mall. You can't make it on Hall off, onto Shainer, you have to go through the mall. To add the insult, the injury, a police officer is giving out tickets like it's a raffle to some kind of, raffle of some kind. He's just giving them out left and right. Some people get through, about four or five get a ticket. These tickets should be insponged. And the reason why, there is nothing but chaos. There's nothing but elbows, and to refrain from the word, fannies causing a heck of a lot of trouble out there. No consideration for one or the other. The officer adds to the confusion with his lights blinking, and, and then there's stalkers, that slows down the traffic. Again, this is at Hall Road in Shainer. These roads are under construction, confusion, complete confusion. I get confused right here in the library. Can you imagine what I'd do out there on a road? There's confusion just everywhere. That area wasn't, is not marked properly. The officer should be helping the people get through that intersection, not giving out tickets. And to, and then the area is, now, to end, to add insult, the confused drivers are being punished, not only before the bad roads and the confusion, but with a ticket to ruin their driving record, plus have their car insurance go up because of this. Actually, it's not the driver's fault to begin with. If the roads were maintained like they should have been, we would not have such a mess. Actually, it's not the driver's fault to begin with. If the roads were maintained like they should have been, we would not have such a mess. Do, do you think, and I think it's only right and proper, that these tickets are insponged? They're not endangering anybody's lives, they're not, they're not speeding, they're not trying to cut anybody off, they do the pure ignorance, make a wrong turn at the wrong place and they get a ticket. And then it's, it's just absolutely unbelievable. The roads are bad. Before, we lost our tires, we lost our blocks on our cars just because the roads are bad, and now we're getting punished by getting tickets that are ruining our records, and I'm really very sad about it. And, and Mayor Taylor, I apologize to you because I called you at a weird time at night, not knowing you would answer your phone, because everything goes to email, every place, everywhere, especially here in the council place here. If you want anything here in, in the building, you go to email and then you have to wait for a response, except for Mr. Vanderpool. Your, your lady is right there on the mark. She called me back within 10 minutes, and God bless her, and you too. And if, if you could help my son get rid of this ticket, he lives in Nevada. He came here to help me. He came to help me to keep my grounds up and cleaned up because of, you know, to keep up with the, the beautification of my house. He painted my garage, he painted my, everything, and then he was rewarded with a ticket. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hatton. Anyone else under communications? Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. First of all, I'd like to thank Chief Martin for explaining that survival coin, the big brain people like Nate Shannon, they couldn't answer that question. But the one thing I have for the chief is that it needs to be changed from survival coin to cardiac survival coin, since everyone is not allowed to get it. That's one thing. I also like to thank the big brain people for not getting in the way, like Nate Shannon, for the, the Spark Must Village. We needed that in this community. It is vital to this community, especially for those people who are, they may have a little something, something going on. We listen to people who would like to drive without insurance, that if we didn't get that, they would be driving without insurance. Mr. Vanderpool, can you explain the mound road to people? Because people think it's being done, but there's a long way to go on the mound road issue. And I think that's just about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Marshalones?
Good evening. Again, my name's Harry Marshalones. The thing that I wanted to talk about tonight is this deal that came out in the century. Again, we're bringing up the 5.1 mile linear park thing. I thought we put that to bed once already. We presented about 50 or 60 different reasons why it wasn't a good idea, but evidently we have some elected officials who are still crying about it. And I, I want to present one thing, and after you leave the council chamber today and you go in the room, sit down, look each other in the face and say, didn't we take an oath that we're going to serve the people? We're going, our job is to serve the people. You serve me. I pay you, along with these other people. And frankly, as citizens, I don't mean to be nasty, but we really don't give a damn what you think, and we don't care what you like. Your job is to find out what we need and what we want and find a way to get it for us. That's what your job is. Now, we don't, we don't, I don't jump up and down and say, you authorized a million dollars today, because I figure you know what you're doing. But I darn well expect you to realize that your job is to serve the people. You weren't elected kings and queens, you don't make rules, you're just supposed to find out what the people need and get it. And if that's a police car, fine. If it's a motorcycle, fine. Fire engine, fine. We need to fix the sewers, that's great. But I got to tell you right now, if you don't start realizing, you know, that people in one geographic area, if you've got 500 people in an area and 490 of them want something, don't come into the meeting and say, I have to represent 133,000 people. Because we're, nobody's going to get 70,000 people to sign a petition. And, and the whole city isn't influenced by what happens in one neighborhood. So let's try to be a little more logical in our approach to this stuff. Otherwise, we're going to reactivate our group, and we're going to be very, very vocal at the polls and very vocal at the council meeting. And we're even thinking of beginning a citizens oversight committee. And if you think something will really mess up a day, a person's day, that can be a real boner. We put about 100 people out here, all in the citizens oversight committee, questioning what each and every one of you are doing. It could get real nasty. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marshalones. Anyone else under communications from citizens? No, 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 no. Nope, 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 nope. No, our council rules.
It's an emergency. No, Heatherly's got rats. Heatherly's got rats. I seen a-
All right, I'll close that portion, move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Mayor, the only thing is, just a comment on mound. There's been a lot of publicity on it of recent. Again, the current project that's underway is a short-term fix. It'll be done by the latest mid-November. This will last us a few years. The big mound road project will start around about 2021 and lasts a few years after that, three to four years. So it'll be a good, a good five to seven years before mound road is completely reconstructed. But the short-term fix will be done this year. Thank you.
Mr. Kachubsky, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Council, any new business reports, anything? Nobody? Nothing? Mr. Radke?
I just wanted to thank all the volunteers and everyone who was involved in Sterling Fest this year. It was a wonderful experience. And, you know, when you go as a non-member of council, you see all the great things. When you go as a member of council, you see all the hard work people do behind the scenes to bring this wonderful festival and attraction to everyone. I want to, you know, just shout out to all the people who worked on the stage. One day they had to sit there for hours because the truck was overdue. They worked hard and I appreciate them, I want to thank them, and I thank everyone who came out to Sterling Fest. It was a wonderful time. I look forward to it next year. Call ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. I think tonight was a great way for the residents of the city of Sterling Heights who are watching to see what it's like to be a council member. Going in reverse order, you had Mr. Marshalones say, you gave an oath to serve the people and you're supposed to do what the people elected you to do, which is find out what they want and do it. We had Mr. Manny come up and say, we need cops out on the roads enforcing the traffic laws. Why are cops not out there? We need them stationed, we need them out there enforcing the traffic laws. You, sir, came up and echoed those sentiments. Then, directly after that, was Ms. Hatton saying, why are the cops out there enforcing the traffic laws? You need to be giving people a break. The traffic laws are too harsh. You need to stop giving out tickets. This is what it's like to be a council member. So now, serve the will of the people. Go out, council. That's all I have. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.